Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the first meeting in spring, apparently, for Minnehaha County. We'll stand and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to silence your cellphone as I am doing right now. And meeting documents are available for review or will be available for review down on the end next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Carol is here if you need a listening device. So that takes us to our routine business items. First, I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
No vote.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from May 7th, 2019.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $3,400,512.14.
Pay the bills?
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments?
Madam Chair, again, this week, 2.9 million is actually flow through money from motor vehicle registrations that's been remitted to the state.
Thank you very much. Sometimes that makes our numbers look unusually high. So, thank you. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, I'd call to your attention a number of reports that have been submitted. We have Minnehaha County Highway Project update for May 2019, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office report for April 2019, and the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds Official Statement of Revenue for April 2019. Those all provide really valuable information. Next item is personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve the routine action.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a special commission action to approve a new position of the Sheriff's Office. Good morning.
Good morning. Jen Oticks with Human Resources. This morning, we, the Sheriff's Office, would like to ask to have a new position approved of Sheriff's Office Programs and Services Manager at a pay grade 21, and then also the approval for immediate recruitment of the position and any resulting backfills. This is a position that will plan and oversee a variety of projects and special services for the Sheriff's Office, and we would expect that a large portion of the cost of that program for this year would be offset by some changes that we had within the Emergency Management Department.
Thank you. Are there any questions this morning?
Would move for approval.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is abatements recommended for approval. Olivia?
Yes, we have two abatements recommended for approval, both for Aspen Harbor LLC. The first one is parcel 214008 for 2018 property taxes in the amount of $8,803.44. And the second is parcel 21413, also 2018 property taxes in the amount of $6,044.51.
Are there any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve those.
Move approval.
Second.
Second roll call vote, please.
Yes. Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to the next item, abatements recommended for denial. Chris Lala, good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, before you is an abatement for Tatiana Shartin. The precipice for this here is she bought this property out of a foreclosure. Our office removed the owner occupied due to it going to the foreclosure company wasn't being principal residence. She purchased it. The house was in such disrepair for a couple of years per her own admission. She did not live in this property. We mailed her the application and all of that, but she didn't qualify, did not make application. About, I think it was two or three years went by, she had moved into the property. No application was ever made to our office to apply owner occupied. She appealed to the local board earlier this year on the value, and the board instructed her that the value was not inconsistent or unfair or unequal. It sounded, it came down to the taxes being at a higher percentage, and they advised her to get with me and try and get it resolved. So, I sat down with Tatiana and explained the situation to her that I can't give something if I don't have an application. She was unaware of it. That's the downside of this. She came from a foreign country. She's not familiar with our laws and things, didn't understand, but it doesn't negate the legality of it. I did not have an application. We cannot do it. Her only course of action was to apply for an abatement, which I helped her do and bring forward to you folks. I'm recommending denial per the law. It's up to you to decide if you would grant the abatement or not.
Any questions for Chris this morning?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
You know, I watched the city council proceeding on this, and their attorney said that they could not give this abatement. And my question is, if we cannot give this abatement, why do we have to vote?
I can answer that. We can't, I cannot deny somebody requesting an abatement. Somebody could come in here tomorrow and request an abatement for anything. I cannot deny them that ability. That's their legal right. So, they're requesting to bring this forward. You do not have to approve it, but you do need to take some action on it. Either approve or deny it.
Commissioner Barth.
Chris, again, the city attorney said that it was not legal to give that.
Correct.
So, we could vote to break the law then?
Essentially, you could. I'm not going to advise you to do that. But yeah, I mean, you have the ultimate decision on this, whether it is or not. Mine is a recommendation, and I'm recommending denial based on the founding of the law.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Madam Chair, could I speak? Are you taking public input at this point?
We'll go ahead and let you speak. It's really not a hearing, so we're not really necessarily taking public input, but I'll go ahead and give you some leeway here.
I'll try to be as informal as I can be then if we're not in official hearing.
Yeah, I'd like to keep it. We're trying to get out of here today, so...
Absolutely. I totally agree. I think Commissioner Barth asked some good, let me back up.
Yeah, you'll need, thank you.
My name is Pat Starr. I'm a city councillor for the northeast part of Sioux Falls. So, we did have a long discussion about this last week, and the recommendation is what we voted on. And the city attorney is actually very correct that the law does not give us an opportunity to make this change or to give this abatement. But statute does allow you, as a governing body, to hear this appeal as part of a due process. And you have, when the situation isn't correct, you have the ability to make things right. And in this situation, I think Chris did a nice job of explaining exactly what happened at the Board of Equalization. Once we asked the applicant exactly what was going on, we found out that she hadn't applied, and it was a communication issue. And it wasn't something we could do at the Board of Equalization because she wasn't really appealing the value of her property. So, the bottom line in this for me is that she doesn't owe this tax. There was a paperwork glitch, and she has that ability to come to you and request this abatement because, in all honesty, she's lived in the property for these three years and qualifies for this tax break. And you have the ability, in my opinion, to be able to go back and do that at this hearing.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Karski?
Sure. Appreciate Councillor Starr's comments, but there is no basis or no ability, from what I've, my understanding of state statute, for us to go back and do this. We were sworn in to uphold the laws of the state of South Dakota. Laws of the state of South Dakota said this is how it works. We have really no recourse unless our legislators decide that, for some reason, going forward, they want to change the ability, kind of like the elderly tax freeze that we talked about where you can go back for up to three years, I believe. There, we could do that. But on this one, there is no, no ability in South Dakota statute for us to give this relief to this taxpayer. As much as we might want to, we could vote for it, but we'd be, as Commissioner Barth said, we would be voting in violation of state statute. So, I'm going to make a motion to uphold the denial of the abatement.
Sir, a second?
I'll second it with a comment.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm afraid I'm in the same place as Dean is, is that years ago, we used to take them on an individual basis and review them until it was brought to our attention it's against the state law. And it's very frustrating, in fact, in the last year or so. We had one that we debated a long time here, and I don't remember which way I voted, but it was very frustrating to me that if somebody doesn't owe the tax, but yet we're taxing them, but there was no paperwork, and according to state law, we cannot break state law. And so, even though I don't like the way it is, then it's a legislative change, and I don't feel like we have, we have the right to break state law. And so, for that reason, I will support the motion that has been made, not very happily, but I will.
Comments?
I just have a quick question for Chris, if I could. Sorry.
Nope.
It's a part of your aerobic problem?
Yeah.
How was the individual notified of that process? I mean, it's been three years in a row, so obviously it was ignored each way. Is it just public mail?
It is public mail, yeah.
Certification?
And I'll be the first to tell you, there's a breakdown. When somebody buys a home, generally through the closing or things like that, it happens pretty readily. If somebody buys a lot, they're not eligible. Then they build a house. Well, that comes after. That comes through a mortgage, not a deed. We don't get a transfer of ownership, so there's no connection to do that. In this case, with this person buying the property, our office did send an owner occupied application, year one, and it never got returned. And I wasn't, I can't speak to what happened after that, as I just started here, but it was sent. The house was in such disrepair, according to the applicant, she couldn't move into it. She worked on it for two years. Well, that's the other criteria, is A, you have to own the home, has to be your principal residence. Well, that was not her principal residence for the first two years, for sure. She didn't live in it. She was living someplace else while it was being repaired to a point she could move into it, and that's through her own admission. So, already, it's ineligible for year one, year two. Year three would be in question in my mind, but again, I can't grant something I'm unaware of. Now, I will tell you, moving forward, I will be trying to, once we get on some other software, I'll be trying to remedy some of that. I'll be running comparisons each year to say, is your mailing address and your site address the same? And you're not owner occupied? I'm going to be trying to send you an owner occupied. Again, in my experience in the past, I've sent three, four, five letters. Some people, you can lead them to water, but you can't make them drink. And at what point do we sit back and go, well, I wasn't aware of it. I didn't know about it. I can feel bad. I sympathize with them, but there's nothing I can do. So, and same with you folks. So, it's come to you. This is her only course of action, so...
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Chris another question also. So, Chris, how many properties do you believe may be in similar situations?
You know, it's really hard to tell. There could be a couple thousand.
Okay.
You know, and even at the boards and things like that, you ask questions, and when I gave my report last week, I stress, if you own your home and you live in your home for the public's sake, if you own it and you live in it and it's your only one, and you're not owner occupied, come see me. You know, we educate and put it out there as much as we possibly can, but it takes the homeowner, it's their responsibility, so...
Commissioner Heiburger?
When they get their tax bill or their assessment valuation, does it say right on their little card owner occupied?
It does this last year, for sure.
Okay.
I haven't seen the ones previously, but...
And maybe another, and I guess it just comes as a card. It'd be nice if there was somewhere that printed on there said, if you do not have owner occupied, please apply.
Yep, and actually, that is one of the purposes. We have to have your assessment notice in the mail to you by March 1st.
Right.
You have until March 15th to make application, and that is the purpose of that. So, you get your card, you look at it and go, I am not owner occupied. You've got two weeks to still make application for that year, and we can get it put on. And then, once it's on, it's on. It's not an annual application, providing you remain in that property and it remains your principal residence, so, or there isn't a change in use. So, one time, one application, and you're good. But there's always, always something that isn't, somebody isn't going to get it that probably would have qualified, and I can't do anything for them without an application.
Commissioner Benega?
Just one follow-up question. Did she come and talk to you before March 15th?
No.
Okay.
This was at the local board when, of appeals, when it came about, so...
Any other questions for Chris? Any other comments? Well, I'd like to just say that I also, you know, I don't think any of us are laying in the weeds here trying to, you know, somehow get more taxes out of folks because they didn't get owner occupied. I think we're trying to let people know, and can we do better? I think we can always do better, and are we looking at options? Yes. Is there a legislative solution to this? Possibly, yes. I think there is. But I do think that we have an obligation to uphold the law. I think the city legal is telling us the same thing that our legal is telling us, is that we don't have a choice here in this matter. She's admitted she didn't file, so I will also be supporting the motion. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so that takes us to item seven, notices and requests. There are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. So, that takes us to opportunity for public comment. If there's someone here today who'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, this would be your opportunity. See nobody rushing to the podium? We'll go ahead and move on to regular business. First item is item nine, public hearing to consider an application for special event on sale wine retailer's license for the Sulan Renaissance Association Annual Renaissance Festival. Olivia?
Yes, as you stated, this is a public hearing for the special event on sale wine retailer's license. The Sulan Renaissance Association has submitted the application. This is an annual event that they do at the fairgrounds, and per South Dakota codified law, I believe it's 354-123, we do have to include in the motion, if you choose to approve the license, the hours of operation. So, it would be June 8th from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and June 9th from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And we do have somebody here in the audience who is present to speak.
I would've guessed maybe you're here, present to speak. Good morning. If you could just give us your name and address, please.
I am Anna Voorhees Sandberg. I live at 2809 South Willow Avenue here in Sioux Falls. And I do invite you to come and join us. You will have a much better time should you grant this license. We do enjoy imbibing on occasion.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve this application and insist on good weather.
I'm going to check. Since this is a public hearing, I need to see, is there anybody here who's, would like to speak against this application? Hard to imagine people speaking against the Renaissance Festival, but I had to check. Okay, now I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Barth?
I'll repeat that same motion.
Okay.
Second.
So, a motion and a second.
Excuse me.
Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Grammar C.
There's a roll call on this one?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, okay. Sorry. My cheat sheet didn't, didn't re, I have to have a roll call vote, so y'all get to stand.
Thank goodness.
Okay.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so, the next item is to consider a motion to approve the 2019 to 2020 malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine renewal applications. Olivia?
Yes, this is the annual renewal time for malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine applications. Just for the record, I'll quickly read off the renewing entities. It's Baltic Corner, Friendly's Fuel Stop, Crooks Gun Club, 38 Roadhouse, Great Life at Rocky Run, I-90 Speedway, Hunter's Point Shooting Complex, Buffalo Trading Post, State Line Casino, The Riviera by Rocco's, Midway Service, Chasers Food and Spirits, Pump Impact, Northern Links Golf Course, Renner Corner, The Alliance Fairgrounds, Yogi Bear Campground, Straw Veil Winery, American Legion Post 307, The Alibi, Bottoms Up, Tucker's Walk, Uncle Ed's Specialty Meats, Wall Lake Oil, Wild Water West, and Wild Prairie Winery. And then, per request of Commissioner, Chairperson Bender, she did ask that I just briefly touch on what the standards are for the commission when approving or considering these licenses. And essentially, what you need to consider is, have they had any violations or felony convictions? None of these people have, or at least they have not attested to that on their applications. All of these were sent to the state's attorney's office, the sheriff's office, and planning and zoning. The reason planning and zoning is included is to make sure that there aren't any uses that are in violation. Outside of that, they just need to make sure that their property taxes have been paid, which they have.
Thank you. Any questions for Olivia?
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. I thought somebody might want Olivia to read all of those again. All right, so we have motion and a second. No further comments. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to our next item. We have a presentation I have down here that we have a presentation by Aaron McGowan. It's like, that didn't look like Aaron McGowan, but...
(inaudible).
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name's Aaron McGowan, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. I thought about a couple different ways to proceed with this informal presentation. I wanted to do something a little different. I know for over 10 years, you've been bombarded with PowerPoints, with crime stats, and graphs and things. I'm taking a little different approach this morning. I'm going to give you my just general overview of what I'm seeing overall in the county, in the criminal realm. I'm going to have our criminal chief, Tom Hensley, follow up with whatever I missed. And then, I'm going to have some members of my office behind the scenes that work in areas that I don't think you generally see in the public eye, and a lot of people aren't aware of. Specifically, I may have Bob Harrison, former sergeant with the Sioux Falls Police Department, talk about our challenges and hurdles with digital discovery. I will have our civil chief, Donna Kelly, talk about what's happening within the Civil Division. A lot of that you are aware of, some of perhaps you are not. And we will conclude with Kerry Mies Burt, who is our senior trial attorney that handles our abuse and neglect cases where there is an abusive home environment and the potential for termination of parental rights. We have seen some remarkable sad trends in that area, and a lot of those are meth-related as well. It seems like it's all I talk about when you hear from me, but meth, meth, meth. Just late yesterday, I got the updated statistics from DCI as far as their height map and their statewide statistics on methamphetamine arrests and seizures in grams, and the news again is not good. Excluding Pennington County, there were 213 meth arrests statewide through April of 2019. Minnehaha County had 366, to put that in perspective for you. If you want to look south of what I call the border of 57th Street, in that same timeframe, when Minnehaha County had 366 meth arrests, Lincoln County had eight. So, the problem is here, unfortunately. If you look at the seizures and look at the grams through April of this year, again, just through the Sioux Falls area Drug Task Force, they see 6,749 grams of methamphetamine. It takes a quarter of a gram to get high off this dangerous poisonous drug. So, through April of this year, with the meth, we did actually seize, there's a lot more meth out there we did not seize. That's enough to get 27,000 members of our community high on this dangerous drug that can cause a lifetime of addiction and destruction. And again, I'm just talking about through April of this year. With what we see, there are a lot of, I mean, I'm not trying to discount the seriousness of opioids and the other drugs we see. Eighty to ninety percent of our serious crime is chemically propelled by alcohol, prescription drugs, and illicit drugs. We've seen the increased deaths in the opioid area, but meth is the main driver of what we see for serious crime in this county. We see meth arrests, and then we see the identity theft, then we see the casino robbery, the drug ripoff, we see the homicide. And it's not just meth. We have a homicide that was ecstasy related. The nature of this addiction causes people to start to steal and lie to their families. Then it progresses and it escalates to more serious crimes, property crimes, which we'll be seeing throughout our community. My office averages 1,500 meth cases every year. And if you look at that many people in our society that are addicted to that drug and the nature of that addiction, they will be in our criminal justice system long time over and over again, and it'll cost us all as taxpayers, and it'll cost the public safety of our community. So, that is not good news. We handle in our office approximately 3,000 to 4,000 felony cases every year. What's unique to a prosecutor's office versus a defense office is that we have the responsibility of taking every single one of those cases to either a grand jury or preliminary hearing. We choose to take well over ninety, 99% of those to a grand jury proceeding, mostly but because of increased efficiency. If each of those were a preliminary hearing, it would completely paralyze our criminal justice systems. We have six grand juries. We hold grand jury all day Wednesday and Thursday. We have to subpoena in all those witnesses, type up all of those indictments for all of those felony cases. We provide discovery for those cases. For those drug cases, we need to provide testing, so we have to send it off to get testing. If it's a UA or a hard drug test, we have to pay for and provide and test all of those, sometimes in a timely manner, which is very difficult with our time constraints. What a lot of people don't know is that by state law, it is the prosecutor's task to type up the judgment and sentence of the court. So, for every felony case, when the judge imposes a sentence, we have to type up a very complex document with every count of that case, specifically what happened. It's the judge's order, but it is the prosecutor's responsibility to type up every sentence and judgment for every felony case. So, we have paralegals that are trying to keep up on those on a daily basis. To try to illustrate the time constraints on all of this, yesterday was a typical Monday. It wasn't a three-day weekend. It wasn't New Year's. It wasn't St. Patrick's Day. We had 31 new felonies in our office yesterday morning that we had to get charged out, get into court for the 130 docket. All 31 of those cases will have preliminary hearings. We'll have to provide discovery. Most of them will result in convictions, and we'll have to type the judgments and sentences, provide all the discovery, all the pleas, the sentencing. Some may go to trial, most do not. But those are some of the challenges we are seeing in the criminal division. I tried to have our juvenile team here, but they were all in court, so I do have a statement that they provided with me. I know, I listen to the commission meetings when I'm charging out felonies in the morning, and I know you've had questions from Mr. Gravitt with the Juvenile Detention Center. So, I'll provide you with what I received from our juvenile team. They have seen an increase in the number of violent crimes and direct file cases into adult court. There are certain cases that we are required to file as adults, so they go straight into adult court without a juvenile proceeding. Those cases include robbery, burglary, assault. These cases are often drug related and involve retribution or payment of drug debt. We have seen a lot of cases involving theft of firearms, which are often linked to the We have seen a lot of cases involving theft of firearms, which are often linked to the serious direct file cases. We see juveniles continuing to commit offenses while on DOC supervision and supervised probation during the school year. We see a lot of simple assaults, disorderly conduct, possession of drugs at school. We're also dealing with juveniles who consistently run away or don't go to school. We handle everything from an underage ticket to violent felonies and everything in between. The Juvenile Detention Center and Arise, which is shelter care, are usually at capacity or close to it. Of course, we are able to refer certain low-level misdemeanors to diversions, and have had some success with that, which helps keep youth and families out of the court system. We work closely with the school district and law enforcement to ensure the best interest of the juveniles that are served while still making sure the public is protected. So we have seen that uptake, not only at the felony adult level, we have seen it at the juvenile level, and you're seeing an increase in your JDC population because of these more serious crimes by juvenile offenders. So I will be back, I will do introductions of the rest of our staff and be open to other questions. I do want to turn it over to our Criminal Chief, Tom Hensley, and I will embarrass Tom by telling you that Tom is the newest recipient of the South Dakota State's Attorneys' Association Prosecutor of the Year Award for the year 2018, with approximately thirty years of service as a prosecutor and our fearless leader, and has a work ethic that you cannot teach or train, and he's one of a kind. But I will turn it over to him for everything I missed. Thank you, Commissioner.
Welcome and congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. State's Attorney, thank you. Tom Hensley from the Minnehaw County State's Attorney's Office Criminal Division. It's morning again in Minnehaw County. Ron, in the Commission Office, State's Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Jail, offices over at the County Courthouse, all of which you keep running and operating. Last night, as we slept safely, hopefully in our homes, Sioux Falls Police Officers, Brandon Police Officers, Regional Highway Patrol Troopers, and Sheriff Milstead's deputies were on patrol, patrolling our roads, our streets, responding to calls for help. As a result of that, those deputies, those officers, those troopers made multiple arrests. As the State's Attorney recounted yesterday morning, is not atypical for our office or for our law enforcement officers in this community and in this county. Thirty-one individuals were charged with new felony offenses resulting in their incarceration, not bonding out, that needed to be brought into court yesterday. A busy day for all involved, the law enforcement officers, the Deputy States Attorneys, the Legal Office assistants in our office that are required to prepare the reports. Before the deputies can go home after a long night on duty, they're expected to upload their reports and the recordings from their contact with citizens here in the community. Those reports go into the Zerker system, which you're familiar with, I believe. We have access to that in our Legal Office assistants. Two of the ten that we have full-time get in early, like on a Monday morning, yesterday morning, to get started with those. They pull down those reports, they actually print them out. Two of our Deputy States Attorneys, generally myself, the State's Attorney on the felony matters, a magistrate team member. We have nine attorneys assigned to our magistrate division, twelve attorneys assigned to our felony division, two tasked with specifically juvenile matters. And Ms. Kelly will talk about the other attorneys in our office assigned to the very able Civil Section. Ms. Mies will talk about the Abuse and Neglect Section, separate and apart from those. But two of those attorneys and two of those LOAs get started early in the day in getting those reports generated, because the judges are sitting next door. And you're familiar with the judges, there are four circuit judges that now are assigned to criminal matters. There are four magistrates that generally handle criminal matters routinely. Those judges are expecting a couple of things. One, there will be two judges yesterday on a busy Monday, as on most Mondays, assigned to deal with those individuals coming in for their first appearances that have been arrested over the weekend and not yet made bond. Those judges will expecting our attorneys to be ready and prepared and familiar, at least with generally the facts involved in each case, in order to support our position on request for bond or no contact conditions with regard to persons to be protected by the judge's orders. So one judge in Circuit Court will take the felony matters, those thirty-one new cases that came in. Almost every one, I was told yesterday, asked for a bond hearing, required the judge to hear from both the prosecution and the very able associates in the Public Defender and Public Advocate's Office, who very quickly have to get up to speed on those cases to try to address the request regarding the bonds. All of that happens yesterday. At the same time, the Sheriff's Detectives, along with Police Department Detectives, Brandon Police Department Detectives, and DCI, working with the Highway Patrol Troopers, are working on other cases that they've been investigating for a period of time, for which there was no probable cause arrest. So in our office, a criminal case comes into us in two manners. One, an officer makes an arrest, resulting in that person being in custody, and the case begins at that stage. We review those, we can disagree with the officer on some of the charges, and we sometimes do, but generally, we're reviewing to make sure that we, as prosecutors, although we work hand in glove with our law enforcement brothers and sisters, nevertheless, our job is to determine there's prosecutive merit for the charges that we bring. And so we're doing that in the morning, making those charges. Our dedicated LOA staff, Legal Office assistants, then are crafting those charging documents that go into court, that begin the criminal proceedings. Other matters are brought because the detectives investigate a case for a period of time, sometimes months. They eventually craft an affidavit if they believe that there is probable cause, that a crime was committed, and the person who's accused committed the crime. They then get that to our paralegals, four dedicated paralegals working with us, who get those assigned to individual attorneys for review again. Upon approval, our LOA staff once again issues a complaint in each of those matters, an attorney signs off on that, asking a judge, such as Crystal Johnson, now back at the State's Attorney's Office, used to do as a magistrate judge when she wore that robe in that situation. The judges review those, determine if they believe that there is a basis for the complaint and to issue an arrest warrant. The person then comes into the system on that affidavit and complaint system. Those people are entitled, as the State's Attorney mentioned, on all felony matters to a preliminary hearing. But a preliminary hearing can take up to an hour for each case, and we don't have that amount of time, nor do the judges. And so we do run six grand juries, two every week, Wednesday and Thursday. Those are full, we present these cases. I know you've had questions in the past about our charging. As you note, there's no reason to lie in wait or in the weeds to try to have someone pay monies that they may not otherwise owe, had they taken proper steps. We have no incentive to overcharge or to charge additional people that don't need to be charged. But it has been our experience that if we have three people in a car and there are drugs found that are in common access to all, that if we only charge one, the driver or the owner, if he happens to be, or she happens to be present, we know what is going to happen. They'll be pointing the finger when it comes time to their trial to the other two people that we didn't charge. Some view it as overcharging. We view it as, based upon the facts, nobody taking responsibility, often refusals to provide a urine sample, which would confirm at least whether or not any or all of those people had been consuming the drugs that are found there. So charging the way that we do, we end up last year with some 2,970 individuals charged with drug offenses. We had forty-eight individuals charged with new rape charges. We had 1,642 individuals charged with assaults. We had sixty-six charged with burglary. We had new homicides, totally nine in our community. We have currently 13,000 open cases. Some of those in our system are waiting on warrant when an affidavit has gone out, and the person has not yet been arrested, so they're not all assigned. Eight,222 of those cases are assigned to specific attorneys. Of the twenty attorneys, we have now twenty-one between magistrate and felony criminal attorneys assigned, but one is just recently acquired from the A and N section, for which we're grateful, and has yet to gain a caseload herself. But of the twenty with actual caseloads, that equals 411 case average, open files. That are, those are 411 individuals that that attorney needs to deal with an attorney upon to try to reach a plea agreement, needs to try to resolve the case or bring it to trial. Each and every week, we have trials that are scheduled in magistrate court and circuit court on those cases that can't be resolved. But our dedicated staff of Legal Office assistants, paralegals, investigators, from whom I believe you will hear as well, our conjunction in working with our law enforcement colleagues, and all of the attorneys in our office are dedicated to try to do what the State's Attorney reminds each and every one of us from the day we are applying for the job until we leave the office, that we aren't just attorneys, we aren't just prosecutors. We are called upon to be ministers of justice by ethical rules that apply to us, and that's our goal, and we attempt to do that. And if you have questions about the process or our numbers, I'll try to address those. You may have those for the State's Attorney as well. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have questions? Erin, I just need to remind you that we are trying to keep these presentations closer to ten minutes, and we have a bus waiting outside for us with a bunch of people where we're supposed to, we're spending today touring Minnehaw County. So this is all great information, and I hate to be the bad guy here, and so...
But we'll try to really speed it up.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I wonder if we could have Carol text DJ Boothby and ask him to defer today's presentation?
I think that's a good idea. Carol, we were wondering if you could contact DJ and see if we could move his presentation to next week? Okay, thank you so much. That would give us a little more time.
I had emailed Melinda, but I think she was out, and I was asking how much time we had, and didn't get a response, so we were...
Oh, there he is. I guess, I think that tip of the hand was that, he granted, deferred his ten minutes to you, so you got a little bit more time.
And we'll try to be brief here. Next, we'll have Sergeant Bob Harrison, and we're fortunate that all of our investigators are former retired law enforcement, talk about some of our challenges with digital discovery. And I'd also like to recognize one of our volunteer digital discovery experts, my Father Francis McGowan, who's been volunteering several days a week to try to get us caught up in that area. So Bob, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. We all have the opportunity to walk by your guys' offices occasionally, and you guys are working hard in there, and we particularly appreciate volunteers for this kind of work, so thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bob Harrison, I'm an investigator with the State's Attorney's Office, where I've been for the past about five and a half years. Prior to that, I spent twenty-eight years as a sergeant and officer with the Sioux Falls Police Department. Just to give you an idea, when I started, well, the first year I had the numbers for, in 2015, we did 38,000 videos. Last year, we did 103,000 plus, and this year, we're on pace for 200,000 videos. It's just exploded. We're actually thirty, almost 37,000 videos ahead of last year already, right now at this point. The last two weeks, we've done over 8,000 videos. So our numbers are just totally out of control. We have no way to rein it in. We have to duplicate what's out there and provide it to the Public Defender's Office, the Public Advocate's Office, and private attorneys in order for them to be able to do their job, just as well as our people to do their job as well. So Mr. McGowan asked me, just to give you an idea of where we're headed with this, and it's just, it's exploding much faster than we ever, ever believed it could, and doesn't look like there's any chance of it slowing down, so.
Thank you. Any questions? I mean, it is the reality of our world right now that none of us really do anything that's not subject to some sort of videotaping, and there's definite pros to that.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say that for the advocates for all these video things on the police officers and all that, they have no idea about the costs that go beyond buying that little camera. I mean, we have a full staff working on making copies of those videos, which, you know, it's just not the cost of just buying the camera, and I think that's not fully understood in the public realm.
And we were just notified recently by Money Wadimack that we need to put another $10,000 in our budget for space as well, so that's just another factor. Again, we'll be brief. I do, I believe Chief Donna Kelly sent in a document with a overview for Dropbox, so that you've got the statistics, but I'll have her just give a quick overview of the Civil Division.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and I will be brief, as you do have a memo that sets forth the Division statistics for fiscal year 2018. The Division is divided into two separate sections, general, civil, and abuse and neglect. In 2018, there were three full-time attorneys dedicated to general civil and two full-time attorneys dedicated to abuse and neglect. There's also a part-time, was a part-time, and still is a part-time Deputy State Attorney who handles solely matters involving medical needs for human services, and his statistics are not included in these figures that I provided for you. For General Civil Division, in 2018, we opened 954 new assignments that were fielded by the three Deputy States Attorneys, including myself, in the Civil, General Civil Division. Amongst, included in that figure of 954 new assignments, we reviewed or drafted more than 200 contracts. We issued more than 200 written legal opinions. We provided legal guidance and more than fifty requests for information under the Open Records Act. We handled approximately a dozen petitions for expungement and petitions for returns of firearms. We assisted in drafting requests for proposals or solicitations for bid, or otherwise provided legal advice in approximately two dozen procurement matters. So inside the Civil Division, internally, we keep track of our assignments by labeling them in certain categories, and these are just some of the categories that we cover, things that also, obviously, employment, employment law, nuisance actions, subpoena requests, and we also opened up several civil litigation matters at the request of the county last year, condemnation action, nuisance action. So we did act as plaintiff's counsel in several civil litigation matters on behalf of the county. In addition to all of that legal work that I've discussed, we also handle habeas corpus proceedings, and habeas corpus proceedings are attacks by individuals in the Department of Corrections who are raising collateral attacks on their criminal convictions. So these are individuals who have been sentenced to the penitentiary that are raising allegations to try to raise a claim for a new trial or a new sentencing hearing. We handled approximately, in excess of two dozen of those types of petitions that were filed last year. These are oftentimes in the most serious of felony cases, the murder cases, the sex assault cases, and it is the Civil Division that handles those habeas corpus proceedings in court. Additionally, I'd just like to touch on as well that one of the abuse and neglect attorneys, so not one of the general civil attorneys, but one of the abuse and neglect attorneys, in addition to handling abuse and neglect proceedings, also handled bond forfeiture matters and was able to recover or to receive the amount of $53,000 cumulatively from the surety companies, and forfeited cash bonds in the amount of $23,678 that would be deposited in the county treasury. And she also has handled the school bus ticket cases, which involve individuals who have overtaken, school buses that are stopped, and that's the Civil Division that handles those as well under the Abuse and Neglect Team. So, and she did recover approximately $14,900 in civil penalties in 2018. So I'll now turn it back to the State's Attorney. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And we'll conclude with Carrie Mies. One of the areas that you do not see are abuse and neglect cases because they are confidential in nature, but I ended with those because they are some of the most serious in nature, and you've heard me talk about the ripple effect of methamphetamine, and Carrie can really illustrate what we are seeing in that abuse and neglect environment and the type of cases they are seeing and the increases in that area. So I'll turn it over to Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie. Thanks for being with us.
Good morning.
They're very serious and heartbreaking cases.
They are.
I'd like to see if you could maybe keep your comments to about three minutes.
I can try.
Thank you.
They are heartbreaking cases, but I always look at our cases, I've had doctors say to me, you know, the system stinks, and, you know, this is how the system is, and I always say, you know, I can't come to work like that. I come to work to try to make children's lives and families' lives better. And so, that said, our numbers definitely have increased. You can see the numbers, but just to illustrate, this year alone, March and April are typically our busiest months of the year, and in 2017, we had twenty-three temporary custody hearings. So what that means is, on every, on any given morning, I wake up, I check my email to see, do children come into custody overnight? That's how I start each and every single day. That's probably the most predictable part of my day, because our day is full of phone calls from DSS, meeting requests, attorneys calling to see about getting their clients' children sooner to them, just a whole, just a whole gamut of issues that come before me. But every day, I start with temporary custody hearings and seeing if we need to be able to go over to court and be able to present evidence to the court of why children that came into custody overnight should stay in custody. 2018, in March and April, we had twenty-nine temporary custody hearings. 2019, in March and April, we had sixty temporary custody hearings with over a hundred children coming into custody. And that is the sad reality of our cases, and the reality of our cases is, myself and my partner, we really, we work hand in hand with the department, but our job is to advise the department on, number one, if a case can meet the guidelines, and more often than not, they probably can meet the guidelines to file a petition. But then, number two, do we have the resources to be able to file the petition, and that means keep these children safe. And fourteen years ago, when I started this work, it was not unheard of to see a messy house case, cases where children were routinely not being sent to school, cases where children were being born with marijuana in their system, where there was alcohol use in the home. And today, I think you heard from Judge Howman just a few months ago about abuse and neglect cases, we truly do have the worst of the worst. And unfortunately, I've had judges say to me, it amazes me how many cases you don't file that you could, but we truly do have to look at not only our office's resources, but what the resources are of the state of South Dakota in foster homes and in able to help, because truly, our goal is to reunify children with their families if at all possible. That said, it's not always possible. But in the fourteen years that I've done this, I know that if we can try to fix the issues, these children will be better off. I brought this binder with me. I brought this binder with you to illustrate my, so what my typical week looks like is, Monday and Tuesday mornings, I'm in court, obviously, I've talked about temporary custody hearings, but then I'm in court with status reviews, advisings, and adjudicatory pre-trial, so updating the court, advising parents of their information, but then the other three days are spent in trial. And I brought this binder because this is a typical binder of what I need to be able to present to the court, to tell the court a child's story and a family's story if I'm not able to reunify them. And to put that into light, when Dick Casey started with me in 2015, he told me at the end of the first week, I think I've spent more time in trial than I did my entire last year. This is each and every single week of my job, is knowing the information that's in here and being able to present that child's story to the court, and if at the end of that, the court does decide to terminate parental rights, it's not a win. You know, I'm not foolish enough to think that I won by any means, but my job is to be able to tell these kids' stories, and I could sit up here and I could, you know, tell you horrifying stories, but I think just to illuminate the significance of our cases, every criminal case is significant in and of itself and has its own story, but each one of these binders, last week, it included ten additional assaults on a mother over the time that we worked with the parents, because this is two years of work. It can include many chemical dependency assessments, mental health assessments, all the services we're really trying to pour into families, but I myself have sat at a table with a mom and said, just not said, begged her, just stick with us, don't give up, because the last thing we want her to do is run from her demons, we want her to be here and address them. And so our job truly is emotional, we do truly have serious cases, I know that my time is run, but I think that just illuminating even the temporary custody hearings, you can see, last year alone, we had a hundred and thirty-two in an entire year, but to be able to tell you, in March and April this year, we had sixty, that's pretty significant. And methamphetamine, it's not a, it's not a drug that you can just put in a vacuum and affects these families, it affects their children, and it goes into the next issue and the next issue and the next issue, and so that's what we try to fight every single day. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for the work you do.
We apologize for going over on our time, but we are present for any questions the commission might have.
There any questions?
Otherwise, that concludes our presentation.
Just one quick question, would you remind us of the state's involvement in those habeas corpus penitentiary cases and what their financial responsibility is?
The state's role?
Yeah.
I don't know that they have really any role.
But I knew you were gonna say, but I wanted to bring that up.
The lawsuit is technically against the warden of the institution where the inmate is being held, but it is my office's responsibility to fight that case. In the past, we had Jim Austin and some of our criminal attorneys handle their own with turnover, that's not always possible to have attorneys that are familiar with the underlying criminal case. The civil division has a greater specialty and the research and writing skills to be successful on those cases. I know Mr. Hensley and I had a recent rape case that was some twenty, thirty years old, where a lot of the evidence was gone, that we had to go back and relitigate on a habeas issue, and they're very important cases, because if they've been in custody for twenty or thirty years and bring that collateral attack, it was a serious event, and it's important to keep that conviction in place, and it's very complex and time-consuming work that our civil division does, but really, you know, there's an attorney that's either probably appointed on all of them that will be at a county expense, and then it'll be my office's responsibility to defend the warden.
No comment.
If nothing else, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we all know where to find you, so we probably have other questions, and we may be reaching out to you, so thank you very much. Thanks to your whole entire team for taking the time to be with us this morning. Okay, since DJ was so gracious to defer, I do need a motion to defer item thirteen.
Move.
Motion in a second, I'm pretty sure I heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We do get to hear from DJ, however, because next item is to consider a motion to declare two highway department message boards as surplus. Did he leave?
Madam Chair, I think he may have...
Decided to...
Walked out.
Here he comes, all right. Thank you, DJ, for being flexible with us this morning.
Come back, go away, come back.
Good morning, Commissioner, DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. Looks like we're on the request for authorizing the declaration of surplus for the message boards. We replaced two message boards in February as part of a purchase, and so our two oldest message boards we have available for surplus, and we've spoken to a couple different local agencies here locally in the county, and the city of Brandon currently does not have any message boards, and they've expressed a pretty serious interest in trying to get these, purchasing these from us. We talked to the supplier, the manufacturer, both of these message boards, and have come up with an estimated value of $10,000 each, and so we are requesting today that you declare these two message boards as surplus for sale to the city of Brandon for a cost of $10,000 each.
Questions for DJ?
Motion to approve with a comment.
Second.
Well, when we bought the message boards, we had a thorough discussion about putting these up for surplus before, so we have thoroughly talked about this subject.
Okay, have a motion in a second, any further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next item, item fifteen, is to authorize the chairperson to sign the Region One mutual aid agreement. Joe Bosman, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner, Joe Bosman, the sheriff's office, filling in for Jason Gierman, who is out with FEMA representatives this morning, continuing that assessment process from our flood, snow, rain, flood event, in no particular order. Anyway, this morning, we have a Region One mutual aid agreement that we're requesting the commission to sign, and what it is, is it is an agreement that provides uniform provisions that we can cooperatively and jointly exercise our resources and assets and things that we have in our jurisdiction, along with seven other counties in what's called Region One, so that way, if there is an event or an emergency type situation, we can all jointly utilize our resources before that official declaration of emergency has been declared. So at this time, this is something that is also going to be presented to the other seven counties that are in this Region One as well, and we request for the commission to sign the Region One mutual aid agreement, please.
Questions from Joe? Commissioner Barth?
Have we not had this agreement in the past? I know that we've responded in other counties for problems.
Yes, there was one of this in the past, this is just kind of a refreshing and update of this.
I would make a motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Next item is to consider a motion to rescind tax-exempt status on certain parcels for the Del Rapids Economic Development Corporation. Chris Lill, good morning.
Good morning, Chris Lill, equalization. Yeah, this one here is kind of an embarrassment to me, I missed it. We received some new exempt applications from the Del Rapids Economic Development Corporation. I reviewed those, they're for a local industrial exemption, they're allowed up to $750,000, I tallied up their amounts, and it was $718,000, so we were all good. I presented it to you at the county board hearing for your approval to recommend those. You granted that approval, it was moving forward, no questions asked. Then we discovered that twelve of the thirteen parcels reside in a TIF, and they're in conflict with SDCL. Ten dash four dash eight one, that any local industrial exemption is not authorized if they're in a TIF, it kind of defeats the purpose of the TIF. So I got in touch with them, brought it to their attention, they crafted a letter asking to rescind the application for twelve of the thirteen parcels. One parcel is not in a TIF district, so that parcel will be exempt, but the other twelve have to be taxed. So through some deliberation and a lot of phone calls and things like that, we ended up going through Department of Revenue, ultimately, and the Secretary of Revenue suggested that since we have this letter, we don't need to go back into County Board of Equalization hearings since that timeframe has ended, and we didn't have to present this to the Office of Hearing Examiners. With their letter of rescission, you are able to take action on it, so I'm requesting that you approve the action to rescind the exempt applications on twelve of the thirteen parcels, and we'll take care of it from there.
Move approval. Second.
Any other questions, comments? Motion in a second, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for being here. Next item is liaison reports. Commissioner Hyburger?
I will just say that I will defer till next week to give my report on the Justice and Safety Challenge Network meeting, which is a MacArthur convention, that was this past week when I was gone, and I, it's short, but I'll get it next week.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Next item is item eighteen, new business. Is there any new business? Not. Item nineteen, old business. Any old business?
If not, I don't...
And a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will convene on our bus tour probably in about ten minutes, the bus is out across the street in the parking lot, so thank you, everyone, for coming this morning.